Judge, you're busy.
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
Still working?
Busy. I'm pretty tired of this approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do fine, so I mean, I have to go outside.
Are you doing auction now?
Yes, I am.
Online or physical?
Online.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing real well, thank you.
You put there?
Okay, for just here, he wants to look forward and he looks against it. They're looking against him, he looks forward. And I'm down if that's a good deal.
Yeah.
I just done wrestle.
Do you need the chair back here?
No. I'm just gonna have Fiona. And you need...
We can see play, do you?
Yeah.
Let's bring it down.
You did that as an ordinance, right?
Which one was that?
The one on the...
Court?
Courts.
I did, yeah. That's just what Judge Taylor indicated that's how he prepared, so we figured it's a ordinance.
Melissa, this is like some weird noise, there's no screen on there now.
Okay, just hit that power thing again, I should come back on for you. So it's gonna be ordinance number five.
I'd like a new one contacting.
The court one maybe.
Yes.
Five. Oh, I thought that's a block or something.
Uh, there it is.
I didn't even...
Hey, you didn't respond to it. Very good. I just wasn't holding down.
Okay, so the ordinance number one, number five on the court.
Zero five?
Yes.
Do we have that?
Two, three, four, five.
It's like you had to get through. Get one from up?
Uh, yes, but not even until certain... Wait until the call. But it sounds funny, but I mean, for the money, she's from China and she's going to Shanghai World, and I'm still, still regarding that really seriously. In another, I'll go, I'll go with next vote.
Like, doesn't sound long, but it's always long.
And my legs are long.
Get your seat. This is...
That's why I changed it back to your original.
Good. It's time to call me in order.
Alvin Davis, here.
Alvin House, here.
Alvin O'Dell, here.
Here.
Review the man from previous meeting.
There's a typo on third paragraph of the album. You got Dave Merritt, assuming it was intended to be Gus Merritt.
I've got the name here.
Oh. Doesn't change the intent.
Unless anybody else has any other edits to that, I'll make a motion to approve the last most minutes after...
I'll say it. All clear?
Aye.
Good. Do you need a report? Any questions?
This is the time that we pay our quarterly bills and then the payments. So I think on those little times, it will act as an...
Good. It's time to call me in order.
Alvin Davis, here.
Alvin House, here.
Alvin O'Dell, here.
Alvin O'Dell, here.
Review the man from previous meeting.
There's a typo on third paragraph of the album. You got Dave Merritt, assuming it was intended to be Gus Merritt.
I've got the name here.
Oh. Doesn't change the intent.
Unless anybody else has any other edits to that, I'll make a motion to approve the last most minutes after...
I'll say it. All clear?
Aye.
Good. Do you need a report? Any questions?
This is the time that we pay our quarterly bills and then the payments.
Carter Hanks, I want you to listen.
Yeah.
I'll be here, should be okay. But... See what, you go, how much, sixty-some cents?
Thirty-eight cents, let's say. If we're charging twelve fifty, Ways and Connection is charging us twelve twelve, we're losing out on thirty cents right now anyway.
Nothing on the Alatown changed though?
I don't think so, did we?
Do we know how many Intan Alatown?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
You don't, approximately.
Alatown, I'm gonna say you have about sixty-five, seventy? And the right that they increase to does not differentiate between Intan and Alatown, they're just thirteen oh one for our estimates regardless.
Any questions? I would need to regulate it, make sure we follow our standards.
Yeah. Make a motion, ma'am?
Before that, can I ask, have we heard anything else on the...
Very steady, they just got started.
Yeah, so, okay. That would've been us, if that would've been so, we could've had an idea that was gonna cause problems also, but we all can, we all can. But if it does, it does, I guess, and there's nothing to do about that. So... So we need to make a motion to pass, don't we?
I'll make a motion that we pass the new trash rates.
You say it. What were you...
From twelve twelve to thirteen oh one?
Yes.
Yeah, twelve twelve, thirteen oh one.
No second?
Go on, David.
Not back.
And that will take effect, need to say, when it takes effect, August twenty twenty five?
Is it fifteen, Melissa?
I don't know, first. I'll be on the...
First. When do we have the petition to be on the...
Every five days before. Notice has to be given for purposes of, under the annexation ordinance. Now, the county clerk may require more notice than that, but I'm sure, she and I haven't really talked about that point yet, but for purposes under the annexation statute, you have to have forty-five days that you give notice to the public that you intend to have an election on this date, forty-five days prior to the day of the election, and that election's March third, so forty-five days prior to that. We have to determine who the registered voters are that reside in that area to be annexed within forty days and give them notice, but it would seem under the annexation statute, forty-five days is our time limit. So even if you all do decide you want to go forward with the special election, our ordinance that we would prepare, which I pretty well have prepared, just waiting to plug a date in election-wise, would have to be, those would have to be an ordinance you all would have to adopt at least that forty-five days prior to, in order, I mean, probably more than that, that's what the requirement is for notice.
So any questions?
the Dollar General has gone down this year in its second year of operation, and he felt a lot of that had to do with the maintenance of the land coming, but he said in the north bound lane that there's trees and grass that have grown up that block, so you don't, are aware of that, and had indicated whether the city could do that, and so unfortunately, the city doesn't own any property that's laying south of the Dollar General store, but we'd certainly be glad if there's any assistance we could provide by advocating on behalf to do that with Arkansas Transportation Department, who, that's whose purview that lie within, if it's on their state property, which I presume it is from what I've seen and from what he has indicated to me. In any event, I will see if I can come up with a figure on what kind of anticipated sales tax increase that would provide to the town. I thought that I had it here, that he'd indicated to me, that I'm not seeing it right away, but I can give that to you and also answer your question as to the issue with Kaufman Mark.
Did you see Mr. Shumman?
I have not yet, because that's what I want you all, I wanted you to review, but, and I'll send that to you so you can review and then let me know if that's the route that you all want to go with it. Hoping, and you know, I just told him that there are certain things we can't do, you know, he was wanting some grants and assistance, tax relief for his property that lies north of the state line, and I just told him that's just not, it's just not possible, I mean, it's the state of Arkansas, not the state of Missouri, and we're pretty sure soon as...
Modern Missouri is Missouri.
Right, and that the people that get the grants, I'm a little rock as soon as that property's located in fair Missouri, but there's a good chance that's gonna lead into that, so... Even though it is adjacent, I get that.
We need a discussion ordinance regarding the court.
Just get the museum...
Oh, the museum, yeah. The museum agreement?
I, I, after we had our meeting last time, I can made that information to Trina, to Ms. Spears, and told her, you know, if she'd like to come, that my understanding is that the grants that the city did receive have been so long ago, they're, I don't wanna say old grants, but they're grants that times passed, there wouldn't be any probably concern with them being repaid, but that the council would just like for them to come in person and present that, but I presented it to you all, and Paul was in our court, I'm not hearing things further, I mean, I'd be glad to go ahead and draft the agreement exchanging it to them, but my understanding is you all weren't quite at that point, maybe I'm wrong on that.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, I apologize, and I just, so I'll go ahead and actually draft a proposed agreement And my understanding, there is to, what they suggested, in the event that their foundation doesn't survive and they have to fold, that they would just transfer the property back to the city of Mammoth. Usually with those 501(c)(3) like it is, you have to either do that or transfer the assets to another 501(c)(3) qualifying entity. I gather you all want to go the route where it would go back to the city?
Well, I think, I think, wouldn't it be okay if somebody else's another 501(c)(3) one?
Yes, if it does, then we can decide if they, you know...
Transfer to them.
That way the city, I say we, I mean, we're probably not we, dead by then, we're still on the city at the time, can decide, but that's the one we're working with.
Because you all would be on a transfer to any 501(c)(3) qualified organization that you think's an appropriate organization to transfer it to, so if it is transferred back to you, but you all wanna have to deal with the care, maintenance, upkeep, so on and so forth, you could, at that point, if another organization formed, that would be desirous of having that.
Okay, now we go to the ordinance regarding the court.
And on that, we had just received, actually, Melissa had received from Judge Taylor, Jamie Taylor, who's the fourteenth, Arkansas Fourteenth Circuit District Court Judge, which anyhow, the, under the court adminis, Office of State Court Administration is what I'm used to calling, but that's really a term in Missouri, I think in Arkansas, they just call Arkansas Office of Court Administration or something like that, but in any event, they want these district courts, these district circuits, because it's not the circuit court, anyhow, the district courts, which have a circuit, like the circuit court has, to have an agreement with any municipality that's considered its own division or its own department, which the city of Mammoth Spring does, and of course, historically had its own municipal court, and then transferred the court, the municipal court to the circuit, or, excuse me, to the district court, ten or fifteen, I'm not sure what the time was, but some time ago. In any event, I don't know that this is something they've ever required of the city before, of course, I would be familiar with this in some, you know, there's about a twenty-five year gap from me being the city attorney down here, but in any event, they are requesting that, and it's just kind of a pro forma agreement, which can be done by ordinance, that the city is agreeing that the district court is to hear its criminal prosecutions and infractions on at least a once monthly basis, so that's what that ordinance reflects, and also allows that the court can set the time, date, and location, it just has to, the city has to acknowledge that agreement, that understanding through ordinance that they will be holding it elsewhere besides from the city of Mammoth. And being saying, yes, and I don't know, the officers could probably answer that question better than I, what, the date, do you know what the current?
I think it varies.
That's something that Judge Taylor, or I presume sets, or maybe the local rules, maybe the circuit court, circuit court in bank or something like that, in Missouri, that's how we do it, is a circuit court in bank sets our court hours and dates, but in any event, that's what that ordinance is for.
Okay, we go ahead, the ordinance zero five, be twenty twenty-five zero five.
I need a motion to introduce it, place it on its first reading.
I'm with the motion that we introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh five, place it on its first reading.
Alvin O'Dell?
Yes.
Second, I'll say it. Alvin O'Dell?
I, we need to read the whole thing, Jim?
Yes.
You can read it or you can read it. Go ahead.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh five, an ordinance allowing for an agreement with Fourteenth State of Arkansas District Court to allow Mammoth Spring Department of said Fulton County District Court to meet in Salem, Arkansas and for other purposes, whereas Arkansas Code annotated sixteen seventeen one thirty-eight requires that various divisions of the district court agree to the location of the district court hearings if they are to be held in a different location than where the department is located, and whereas the Mammoth Spring Department of the Fourteenth District of the state of Arkansas Fulton County is regularly held in Salem, Arkansas, county seat of Fulton County, Arkansas, and whereas it is preferable to continue with the conducting of the Mammoth Spring Department of the Fourteenth District Court to continue being held at least once a month in the city of Mammoth Spring or the city of Salem. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Mammoth Spring, Arkansas, section one, that there is an agreement between the city of Mammoth Spring that the Mammoth Spring Department of the Fourteenth District Court of the state of Arkansas Fulton County, Arkansas, continue to be held once monthly on a day and time established by the Fourteenth District Court Judge in Salem, Arkansas. Section two, that an emergency is heard by and declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from the date of its passage.
Do we need a... Motion to introduce an ordinance?
I just need a motion for a second reading by title only.
Okay. Make a motion for the second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh five.
An ordinance allowing for...
We need a second.
I'll say it.
Second, I'll say it.
Alvin O'Dell?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. An ordinance allowing for an agreement with the Fourteenth State Arkansas District Court to allow Mammoth Spring Department of said Fulton County District Court to meet in Salem, Arkansas and for other purposes. Now you need a third and final reading of the motion. A motion for that.
Can you say so moved?
Sure.
Say it. Say it. Alvin O'Dell?
Aye. Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh five, third and final reading. An ordinance allowing for an agreement with the Fourteenth State Arkansas District Court to allow Mammoth Spring Department of said Fulton County District Court to meet in Salem, Arkansas and for other purposes.
Now we need a...
Need a motion to pass it.
Make a motion to pass the order, discover twenty twenty-five, touch zero five.
I'll say it.
Kramer?
Aye.
In the middle call?
Yeah. Alvin Davis? Yes.
Alvin House? Yes.
Alvin O'Dell? Yes.
Alvin O'Dell? Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty... Now the sidewalks here, man. I've had, I couldn't tell you how many calls. If there's things on the sidewalk, if people cannot nearby, if they're not walking side of the sidewalk, it was more than one place on the sidewalk. Not, there's nothing on the sidewalk, it's empty.
Referring to Arkansas Code 1454105, is the one that empowers the city, that's the ordinance, or the statute that provides authority to the city to regulate and to, and can have an ordinance with nothing at all, or put certain stipulations on it. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, but that is, that's kind of the all encompassing state statute that gives some municipalities the authority to draft whatever ordinance they want, whatever, one is, or, or perfectly, either, or three, or four. And again, if you, one of those 14, section 14 dash 54 dash 105, and I, you know, just looked at some of the different cities across the state by looking at their ordinances, you know, most of them don't necessarily have an outright ban, although there is one, and I don't recall which city that was, but Eureka Springs does in the historic part of town, but not necessarily the other part of town, of course, that's their trade, and, you know, they have a lot of regulations dealing with what the sidewalks themselves, because of the historic nature, a lot of those, I think, are made out of limestone slabs and so on and so forth. Little Rock, you know, provides for merchants to put items on the sidewalk, but only after receiving essentially a license to do so from the city administrator or from the city clerk's office, and then limits what those are and the times that they can be there and so on and so forth. And then other cities just provide so long as it is within whatever distance that they've set forth. I think on, for example, on Little Rock where they do that, it still has to leave at least a six-foot clearance. Yes, no permits shall be issued for display of goods, wares, merchandise, or other items less than six feet from the curb line, so there has to be at least six feet from the curb line to wear the merchandise on and so forth begin, or as approved by the city manager in the city of Little Rock, that's how they do it, but under that, Arkansas Code 1454105, authority could be given to another official, and that has to be a city administrator, city manager.
So in Eureka, in the historic part of town, do they have a ban on items on sidewalk, or is it?
The, it is, you cannot have it except for a welcome sign, some kind of a sign right there, or if the storefront is such that it has, and I'm not sure what that term is, but where you go in, there's a recess or kind of a little alcove, and I know some of our stores along Main Street have that, then you can, that allows merchants to put their items in that area.
Listen, are you that?
Yes, and that's, I don't know if I passed that.
That's, I have a copy of the city code.
The city code is what I had too, and then I called again.
It just says, um, let's see here, and one of the things that the code does make clear is whenever it uses the term street, thoroughfare, alley, often it'll say sidewalks, but then when you read further into the actual, somebody even said ordinances, it just talks about the thoroughfare, the passageway, or whatever, the sidewalks are included in that. So, kind of what's good for the road is good for the sidewalk also. So if it talks about a road shall not be blocked, that includes a sidewalk. Let me see, this is primarily improvement, construction and repair, if any person desiring to fill in ditches, make driveways across ditches, or in any way change the flow of water through the ditches along the streets in the city of Harding, which sounded an awful lot like ours, shall obtain a permit from the city first and then shall follow the guidelines adopted by any person violating this ordinance, and it provides what the sentencing guidelines are there, and then any person found in violation of this ordinance shall be given writ notice from the city and given 10 days to comply with that requirement. But there are other ones here, and I would be glad to send those to you so you can get an idea of what different cities have done. I really think that based upon Mammoth's current ordinance, dealing with sidewalks, that a fresh start may just be necessary. And, go ahead, I'm going to just say that's 9-04-01 for the city of Mammoth, our ordinance is, in case you want to look at that, 9-04-01. And then the state code, which is the general authority, the empowerment clause that gives the city the authorities to regulate their sidewalks is 14-54-105. And then, of course, the city, the issues come up with the American Disability Act, which, of course, the ADA is telling the city what they can and can't do, but that in turn means if there is a merchant or private individual, somebody that is by their actions violating the ADA, then the city's responsible for the enforcement of that. So to say that the ADA doesn't apply to private individuals, only applies to the public, is incorrect. It applies to the city to enforce the city, to force the city to enforce those that are cluttering the sidewalk with that authority to, I think there was some confusion there, maybe, but in any event.
What were you going to say, Ken?
I was just going to say, I am 100% in favor of getting the streets passable for people. I would just like, when we, if we do proceed with it, I'd like, I'd like the ordinance to be very clear about what we're talking about when we define merchandise, what we're talking about as far as eating walkways. I don't, I don't personally want to see a time when we are so restrictive on the businesses, you know, you know what I mean? I don't want, if somebody's got a flag that sticks out this far, you know, just, just want, be very clear on what we're saying that we want done.
Sure.
As far as, you know, if you're dragging your stuff out and people can't walk around, that's not fair to the general public whatsoever. You can display things in your businesses, you can have signages that, that will allow for that. So I just would like, when we do have the ordinance drawn up, to be very clear that we're not saying, you know, you can't just stand outside and say, hey, come on, you know what I mean? Like, be very clear about what we're talking about and not just have some broad ordinance saying something that might not be seen as detrimental to business or detrimental to people who just want to walk up and down the street and be, say, hey, you're blocking our sidewalk, or trying to enjoy the day, or get a parade today, and, you know, that's my main concern, is that we don't try to overstep, but also get things clear, because we do definitely have a problem. I witnessed just Saturday, people who had to move into the street, off the sidewalk, move literally into the street to, because they could not pass up the sidewalk. That creates a public health problem, and that's dangerous, and that is, I think, what we're all concerned about, and I don't mean to speak for everybody, but I think that's what we're all mostly concerned about.
Well, if anything were to happen there, that would come back on us.
Well, and it's just, we just don't want, you know, anything too happen to anybody, and there's, and it's not just getting hit by cars, you know, stepping up and down, and just all that stuff, and these were elderly people who were having to step around, and I was like, oh, gosh. So, that is my only concern, is before I would be voting, is just be very clear on what exactly we're talking about, the language on, on what we're trying to, don't want to run off.
I can see it from both sides, I mean, businesses want to try to draw public in.
Sure.
My parents and my grandma had stores on Main Street for years, and it, it's tough to try to make money doing that, and having stuff on the sidewalk does let people know, oh, wow, that store's open, I won't go in there, they got some cool stuff.
And the last thing we want to do is run businesses off, I mean, we want to promote businesses, but we can't, we can't do that while also endangering citizens. I mean, we just can't do that. That would be my two cents on it.
And I would certainly be glad to draft, just one that then, you know, sent to each one of the council members and go off and review and add or, tell me, you know, where you want to go with it. That would be easy enough, because it's just the statute gives the city a pretty wide latitude, you know, as long as it's equally enforced to limit or to allow as much as they would want, but if there is an ADA complaint that would be filed, of course, it would be filed against the city, but then the city would then be able to look to that merchant, especially if they have been warned. And of course, any kind of civil lawsuit, you know, that would be for a violation of ADA, not a civil lawsuit for injury, that would start to go to the merchant.
Would it be possible for me to speak on this? I have some important factors regarding liability that I'd like to discuss before you guys move forward.
No, I don't need to hear that.
I'm sorry, I just got back from vacation, I was hoping for an exception, because I think we're on the same team.
You got to do me.
Thank you. First of all, I'm Christie Hatman, and I have the big store on the corner, and also one at the corner down here, and first of all, I would love it if you guys would talk to everybody on Main Street before you move forward with this, because I think something that we do, that y'all don't know, is the sidewalks aren't in great shape anyway, and we've been putting things out there defensively because we're afraid of liability. There's been stops out on, right directly in front of my store, there was a three-inch stop, but the city, I thank you guys, you got right on it once I put it into a letter. You came by and you fixed that. The manhole cover is partially fixed, but it's a tripping hazard. I know another person who, she puts her things out on the opposite side of the sidewalk because there's a two-foot drop-off, and she's afraid that the kids riding their skateboards are going to fall off. If they fall off in front of my store, or they have, you know, the sidewalks are all wonky in front of a lot of businesses, many of the sidewalks are not ADA compliant, but if somebody has a tripping hazard, they're going to sue me. So I put stuff out there defensively often, as do other businesses, so before you guys move forward, I would ask that you do consider that these businesses, I travel all the time, and I stop because of what people have outside of their stores, it is so important, and businesses were already paying rent, insurance, employees, water, electricity, internet, advertising, trash, which has not been picked up in a month and a half behind my store, by the way, but we're paying all these expenses. If you take away our calling card, you're taking away our business and its ultimately revenue, and I have insurance out of Wazoo. We are all on the same team. I want all businesses to succeed, and just for the record, I am approachable, call me, come to my store, come by, but please don't restrict other businesses. And Danny, I know you've had complaints, but I don't operate, I've had complaints in my businesses for 30 years, I don't operate based on complaints, I based on my procedures, my standards, and if there's an ADA ordinance, I feel like that's what we need to abide by, not a complaint. If I walk into my store, it's currently 51 inches wide, ADA requires 36 inches on an existing sidewalk. I'm over compliance by 15, 16 inches. I'm sorry if people complain, but we don't, I just don't operate based on complaints. But if you have a complaint, I'll work with it, just call me, call me.
Sidewalk, or, well, jiggle market, so either that, that shit.
Well, I'm talking about the width of the merchandise to the pillar.
If you said it was all wonky and everything, that's the store owner, the guy that owns it.
Well, the wonky part that I was talking about was between the sidewalk and the street.
So it shouldn't be on the sidewalk, the street.
Well, the, the manhole cover that doesn't fit is between the sidewalk and the street.
It shouldn't be, they're walking around.
Asphalt, where the new asphalt is there.
Right, and it's mostly fixed, they did fix it mostly, but it's still, I'm worried about if an old lady steps on it. So I put a flower pot on it every day, because I want people to walk around it, because when you step on that manhole, and I would invite you to do it, just, just go, and I'll just go, and, and look at all the other sidewalks up and down, there's, the sidewalks up and down the two blocks, they are not all ADA compliant. So if we're going to adhere to it, the city is not compliant, and I want to take the two, but again, we're all in the same, I would, we want to, on your line about the other, the wonky side there, but it's stoplight, there's, there's often, there's drop-offs like this. I purposely put things there because I don't want people stepping up there and down there, because if they fall, they're going to sue me. I'm scared of liability as well. I don't want y'all to get sued, I don't want me to get sued, and I'm going to play defense.
Well, I was told it would be the order for the store written, the city won't be sick.
Right, so therefore I'm going to protect myself, you know, so I, I-
Move it off the street?
I'm sorry?
Move it off the street, off the sidewalk.
Move what off the sidewalk?
Your merchandise and stuff, and then they all walk up through there when we stepping out?
If they can't walk through 51 inches, they don't need to be going eating fried fish, they need to be walking up here to spring. 51 inches, I have tape measure. There's 51 inches, width wide.
Well, as a store owner on Main Street, what's the difference between not having anything on the sidewalk and having some things on the sidewalk, in your opinion?
Is there, is there a consideration beyond ADA compliance? And I'm not unsympathetic to people with ADA, my grandma was in a wheelchair for years, I pushed her around. I am sympathetic to that, but say your question one more time, Adam.
To satisfy the complaints that are coming in about people trying to walk up and down the sidewalk in that area, as opposed to the city saying, okay, nothing on the sidewalks except the flags saying you're open, or no restrictions at all, what's the middle ground?
Well, the ADA for existing sidewalks requests 36 inches, it requires 36 inches, and there's even exceptions that go down to 32. You guys have said on new, new-built sidewalks, the requirement is 48 inches. So if you guys want to pass an ordinance for 48 inches, I think almost everybody would be compliant with that, however, if you'll go measure other, I don't want to throw any other businesses under the bus, but there are existing handrails, and if you put a tape measure to it, it's actually not even 48 inches there, and, and, and so I feel like this is more of a personal complaint, and I feel like that if this moves forward, it's penalizing multiple businesses because people have complained about me, and I don't like that. But if you walk down, I have a tape measure, listen, look at this, if you walk down my sidewalk, it is currently 52 inches. How wide do you want it? That is 52 inches, and I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, this isn't even manages, this is actual imperial units of measure, inches, 52 inches.
Is that the, are you speaking of the concrete sidewalk itself, or your merchandise that's out there?
Between my merchandise and that pillar is 52 inches. I'm sorry you're getting complaints, but if people can't fit through 52 inches, they don't need deep fried fish.
Respectfully, not.
so I feel like this is more of a personal complaint, and I feel like that if this moves forward, it's penalizing multiple businesses because people have complained about me. And I don't like that. But if you walk down, I have a tape measure, listen, look at this. If you walk down my sidewalk, it is currently 52 inches. How wide do you want it? That is 52 inches. And I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, this isn't even manages, this is actual imperial units of measure, inches, 52 inches.
Is that the, are you speaking of the concrete sidewalk itself, or your merchandise that's out there?
Between my merchandise and that pillar is 52 inches. I'm sorry you're getting complaints, but if people can't fit through 52 inches, they don't need deep fried fish.
Respectfully, not. We had a walker, her elderly husband, I would, I don't know who they are, I don't know their names, I didn't recognize them. I would say they were probably in their mid 80s, and they could not get maneuvered between your property, and you had that tricycle thing sitting out there, and they walked around out into the road to get, to get around that. And that's what made me go, oh my Lord. Because, you know, I'd seen people, you know, try to move it around before. You know, usually people hand in hand or whatever, and, you know, yes, they don't have to do that. This was something different. This was, this was an actual risky thing that I saw, that I felt was unnecessary. Now, again, I, as you, I said a while ago, I don't want to impede anyone's business. I hope you become a multi-multi-millionaire, that's why, that would tickle me.
Thank you, I want to do it.
That would tickle me to death. But we, what we have to do is, we need to figure out a way to help you without our, our citizens or the visitors to town risking their safety. And when, when you say that there are problems with the, the street, please let us know immediately so we can do what we can do.
I will.
Right? But in the meantime, please understand where we're coming from. This is an attack against you, this is an attack against anybody's business. This is us trying to protect the citizenry and the people who come and visit.
I agree, I agree.
Who you want to come.
I agree, and I want everybody protected too. But just for clarity, on the opposite side of the tricycle of which you speak, which was right beside the manhole cover, was a sidewalk that is open six feet wide. So just for clarity, just, I want all y'all to understand, the sidewalk was open six feet wide here, tricycle was parked in the parking spot, right down where everybody parks, and the street was out here. They chose to walk in the street despite the fact there was a six-foot open sidewalk here.
Again, she, she had a walker, and he was assisting her, because even with the walker, she was not able to go unassisted, so side by side, they could not proceed without going out into the street.
I disagree with you, and I would like to have a picture of this.
Well, I was, I wasn't taking pictures, and I didn't turn up at the house.
I'll bring pictures next time, because they could have used the sidewalk.
I believe what you're saying, I'm just telling you that-
I'm just telling you, they could have chosen sidewalk. I have a placement where I was like the back of my hand, and I don't want to be out of compliance with ADA. And I'm not gonna give you guys the opportunity to come down there and take a picture of something not walkable, after all this has happened. But I promise you, they could have walked down the sidewalk of which there was a ramp.
They obviously did not believe that.
We're gonna table this to next month?
Thank you.
We've got a-
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Thank you.
You guys got anything? Your motion, is that your?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.